Monday, September fourth, and I might recall a voting board meeting to order as we move to the role call. Trustee Booker?
Here.
Trustee Woods?
Here.
Trustee Owens?
Here.
Trustee Johnson?
Present.
Trustee Grease?
Here.
Trustee Thompson?
Here.
President Montgomery? Here. I invite the audience to join us with President Grease. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the vital importance of standing on the nation's individual liberty and health. Thank you. Are there any persons desiring to be heard?
There is not, President.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is elected officials and staff reports that are in our packet. Were there any questions or comments around anything you saw in the packet? I would just encourage you to keep up with a lot of that information because it does give us free advanced notice of some of the things that will be going on in the building as we get into this time of the year. We know that there are a lot of holiday activities with the staff and other communities. So we want to make sure we have those events on our calendars. We will move forward with item number five, which is our consent agenda. And on our consent agenda, we have the minutes on the November twentieth meeting, accept the twenty twenty three third quarter year-to-date financials, consider approval of purchase of two police vehicles, and consider approval of the twenty twenty four salary rate wage plan. And all of these items are in our packets. Are there questions? Yes, Trustee Booker?
Man of the chair, I just wanted to state that items B through D were taken up at the finance committee meeting last.
Okay. If there are no questions, we do need approval of the consent agenda.
I'm approving the consent agenda.
It's been moved by Trustee Booker and seconded by Trustee Thompson to approve the consent agenda. Are those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it motion here. Thank you. The next item on our agenda under new business is to consider resolution number twenty-three type of thirty-three, creating a tax incremental district number five, approving its project plan, and establishing its boundaries. And who will be speaking to that?
I can start off, President Montgomery, then you also have our consultants from Ellers here this evening and Attorney Fuchs. Our development council is on Zoom call. This really is the culmination, at least internally, with the village for the creation of tax incremental district financing number five. And this is broadly the area that extends from the Bank Mutual Business Park through the former Wright High Building, across the railroad track into the Ground Deer Business Park, and then pulling in the U.S. Bank, the first Citizens Bank on the north side of Ground Deer Road. The resolution that is in your packet would formally adopt the project land and the boundaries of the new tax incremental district. We have talked about this previously at the Village Board. It has also gone to the Joint Review Board for a preliminary discussion. That's the other taxing entities. And it has gone to the Community Development Authority where we held a public hearing. We notified all affected property owners in the district. There was no comments from the property owners or the public at the meeting. And the CDA did unanimously recommend in a passable resolution approving this project plan and the TID boundaries. We have one final meeting with the Joint Review Board following your action here this evening. And then ultimately, hopefully, they would agree to approve the district. And then the district would be established in early twenty twenty-four with a lifespan of twenty-seven years. The goal of this tax incremental district really is to create a foundation for providing redevelopment support, both economic and other village capital support for the repurposing and reuse of what we identified as significantly-plated properties throughout the district. So with that, I think Ellers, myself, or Attorney Fuchs could answer any questions. Tyler as well, of course, Attorney Bayer as well, if you had any questions. We would be recommending a motion to approve resolution twenty-three thirty-three, creating the district and approving the project plan.
We've heard the presentation from Nate as it relates to creating this district. And we have had a number of meetings where this information has come before us. Are there questions as we consider this resolution on tonight? Trustee Johnson?
Yeah, look at them now. One of the properties is Wright High Building, anything gone at the time. And the other thing this time is a valued property that has decreased since the beginning.
Well, we do know that it went to auction. I do not know that we have any clarity as to how that auction finished. And we believe there was a high bidder. But we have not had any further information. As of right now, the assessment is holding at the twenty twenty-three established value. We anticipate with our new assessor that perhaps, as we've seen on some other vacant office properties, that it will probably lose some value because of its vacancy.
If I could just add to that too, since Nate brought off assessment services, even though next year won't be a revalue year, I talked to the assessor, making sure that we evaluate and assess the properties within TID five here to assure that we have established, you know, a proper baseline. And I think that's important because, you know, if we establish a baseline based of what accurate appraisal did, and then you switch assessors and a different assessor has a very different opinion on what the assessment should be at those properties. You know, I want to alleviate any potential risk of that judgment already devaluing and any increment being generated from those properties too. So be assured that our new assessor is on board for still reevaluating those, these properties in TID five for those reasons too.
Other questions? Trustee?
Questions more so. Can you just kind of comment with that what's happened with purchase of the building?
The F Street project here, yeah. So they have secured, and as you've probably seen, they've secured a demolition permit and are in mid-demolition of the eighty-nine eighty-nine building, the building to the north. They're starting to basically move to the forty-three hundred building. The goal here is to have those buildings demolished before the end of the year to set that base value as just vacant land. F Street is working very well with their contractor, M Red, and had the energies kind of really assisted in some early disconnects of their power and utilities to the building. And everything is proceeding smoothly there. We anticipate that they will probably be back with their designs for the site. I'd say probably in about two months. Then we will go through the review process for what is still anticipated to be that hundred forty-eight unit multi-family garden-style apartment, multi-family project with a one-acre commercial outlot. We have not heard anything further about what the commercial outlot designs are. I anticipate that will probably just be a vacant pad as they really design the multi-family phase first.
Other questions? If not, we do need a motion to consider resolution twenty-three thirty-three.
I hope that you do the consideration for number twenty-three thirty-three, creating tax incremental district number approving the project plan and establishing.
Is there a second?
Certainly.
It's been moved by Trustee Thompson and seconded by Trustee Woods to consider resolution twenty-three thirty-three. And because this is a resolution, we will go along. Trustee Booker?
Aye.
Trustee Woods?
Aye.
Trustee Owens?
Aye.
Trustee Johnson?
Aye.
Trustee Grease?
Aye.
Trustee Thompson?
Aye.
President Montgomery? The resolution has been adopted. The next item on our agenda, presentation of possible consideration of joining the North Shore Chamber of Commerce. Do believe we have someone here that power may be able to introduce for Nate.
Yeah. So Becca and David are here from North Shore Chamber. We met with them probably about one to two months ago to talk about the opportunity. I met with about forty-five or so businesses this year. And one of the main concepts that would come up or questions that would come up is a Brown Deer Chamber. And while it's my opinion, I don't know if there would be enough Brown Deer businesses to warrant our own separate chamber. I think this is a potentially much better fit for our Brown Deer businesses and give them a much better access to resources. Having said that, I'll have Becca Garrison introduce herself and David a little bit more and talk about some of the benefits of coming to Chamber. And then when she's done with the presentation, I'll just talk real quick about that stuff.
Do you want me to take the microphone?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right. Hi, Becca Garrison. I'm the executive director for the North Shore Chamber of Commerce. I'm here in the book like kind of talked about on your board agenda that I am the executive director for also the tourism entity, let's say the North Shore, which was welcomed in Glendale virtually three-year, Nate and our board voted on it a few months ago that January, virtually come to start on the North Shore and kind of do more tourism in the North Shore. I imagine right now we only get the retail taxes from the city of Glendale. But we really want to promote the best, get current tourism to the entire North Shore. I spearhead them to our hotels there. But I'm here to kind of showcase our North Shore Chamber and all the great work we've been doing creating this chamber. And so actually, Fuchs was just out there, but he was an attorney as well. Actually, created this entire chamber and business development kind of branch entity of the city of Glendale back in the day. But now we are completely separate entity since the city beyond us will be separated. And so we run Welcome Glendale, which will be discovered in North Shore, and then the North Shore Chamber of Commerce. We have about a hundred and seventy-three businesses that are part of it, a few of our Brown Deer as well. But really just broadening the scope and working with different entities such as yourself and communities to really uplift our whole business community, our residents' lives, tourism, and then obviously economic development. And so we're chamberless, non-profit. We host networking events. We do different clubs and co-ops throughout the community. You might have gotten a lot of more for our events guide, similar events guide that we put out. We built up fourteen thousand homes last year, several Brown Deer. This year, we plan to do eighteen thousand and get even more into the Brown Deer, more into the Bay Side. But this is a full summer guide into a yearly guide. So it brings out more opportunities for us to really showcase Brown Deer, showcase the parks and recs, showcase the city does, and also just be an extra resource for Brown Deer. And we want to help the businesses as well. So being a chamber, we've heard from different communities, Bay Side, Fox Point, even Whitefish Bay that only has a bin district. Their bin district actually joined our same with Shorewood. So we partner that like dead or bin district where they necessarily offer. And then just kind of creating this collaborative with the North Shore aspect of it so that we can really work with all seven communities. So we were actually at the village managers meeting and presented to all of them as well. But I'll let David talk as well. He's our membership manager, started about four or five months ago. You know, we've been growing so rapidly, we also run the tour. We really wanted to open up a new door and kind of even expand our chamber. So do the lunch and learn events, we do more in singles, network at night. Just really trying to help the business community grow. And we really want to feel like helping your sister career as well. So that's kind of why we're here and why we're kind of asking you, the board, to join, even though we talked about with Tyler and with Nate. But yeah, I'll let David talk for a second, but thank you for having me tonight. And I know I've seen a few of your faces around before.
Hey, Becca, so I'm David Richardson, the North Shore Chamber of Commerce. And thank you all for letting us speak to you guys today. Really, the main focus of our work is based on the knowledge that all of our communities are at any given moment competing with every surrounding community, whether it be for residents, for employers, for investors. And so the work that our chamber does is to try and continue to develop what we currently have. We want your community and your residents to be as happy as possible in the place they live in and then allow us to then promote that to the greater surrounding communities. We all know that we probably only have one opportunity sometimes. You convince somebody either to move here, to work here, to go out to dinner here. So we try to not only give that first impression to someone who might otherwise not get it, but also continuously reinforce over and over again to those who are already seeing that marketing. So really, the reason that we want to partner with you is because of things you're doing like the tax incremental financing. We want to be able to promote the things you're already currently doing. If you're already developing a great business community, allow us to you to develop that with you. If you have resources that you want us to continue to market, whether it be to your current residents or the potential new investors looking open, new property seer, we want to be that resource for the community as a whole. Hopefully, I think we all have a general idea that we want our community to be a place where families can grow, enjoy good schools. Once they graduate from those schools, maybe go off to good colleges, and then they want them to come back here and work in good jobs. And so I'm a big believer in economic development really starts at the community level. And so I think to really reinforce what you're already doing as communities will work here. And then we can obviously answer any questions.
So before any questions, I would just say the next step to action in front of you tonight is actually for the Village of Brown Deer to become a member. We would be at the nonprofit civic rate of ninety-five dollars per year. If that's approved tonight, I will send an email out to our email distribution list of the different businesses to let them know about the opportunity. I also think this is a great story article idea that we can put in our next magazine to let people know how we are working with the North Shore and trying to promote our businesses. So there's other internal communications that we can do. Actually, just today, Claudia Lovett, who's been working with North Shore now, she's looking for story ideas. So FYI, I think this would be a great story idea as well. So there's different ways that we'll promote this to businesses and let residents know of the efforts. But, you know, the summer guide is just one of many examples how I feel this team would be really good at promoting not only our businesses, but even the events that we put on too.
Questions?
It's good to be, I've done the events that is hoping to buy and go for a chamber. The last one that's in Park Street.
Yeah.
So I've enjoyed the things that they've been doing today.
And I'm operating with a nonprofit, and we're going to join our business.
Man of the chair, question?
Yes, sir.
Based on the communities that we work in, what is the summing of businesses that are members?
Pretty well right now. So we were founded in twenty twenty and worked for the pandemic. I worked at a business that was part of the first chamber members in the area of Glendale. I worked at the mayor's house as their vice manager and marketing manager. Pretty much when I joined that chamber before, I was over this job. It was called Glendale Your Business Association, and they had started there was another person. So the mayor of Glendale kind of came with my predecessor, Ben Duzo, and said, we need to create an actual Chamber of Commerce that's a nonprofit that shows that they have a board, that shows that they are for the businesses, and it gives back to the community. And so Brian Kennedy, the mayor of Glendale, kind of came together and kind of spearheaded this with John Fuchs, actually, to create this because John Fuchs actually spent a few seasons in the flutter to the other general that claims that they are Chamber of Commerce. We're sanctioned by the U.S. Chamber of Commerce. We're sanctioned on one of our slides by the M A C, by Carroll, Wisconsin, by Wisconsin Manufacturers Chamber. The home really, they got used by the globe. And making sure that we're getting back to the community and making sure that we, you know, promote as many businesses as we can. Right now, I'd say our percentage is at fifteen point one percent. Because if you look at it, we have over three thousand businesses in the North Shore. I just sent a letter of information to all those businesses. There's about thirty-one hundred businesses in the entire North Shore that got our notice. I should say of the difference between the two chambers that we were getting running into different problems and people thinking we were with that chamber and then had them having a negative connotation with us. But we only were founded, so when I started in the summer of twenty twenty-one, we only had sixty-three members. Half of them were not paying due to COVID, they couldn't afford it. We like to keep our dues pretty low so that small businesses can thrive as well. So based on full-time employees. Obviously, what we offered to Tyler was the non-conference, since you guys are, you know, the community. And so we're really just trying to uplift and pattern the businesses that we can join. Because the more we can do that, the more that we can get grants away, the more that we can, you know, become that big chamber like you see Milwaukee Metropolitan Chamber. I mean, obviously, we don't have as many businesses and as many Fortune, you know, five hundred companies. But we really want to see the North Shore thrive and see all our businesses succeed and also bring more businesses to the area. So it is pretty low right now, I will say. But I think that this partnership will also bring us more members and then also will be beneficial to Brown Deer as a whole as well because we can promote the pond, we can promote the parks and recs, we can promote the different farmers markets and events that you guys do.
What is your annual operating budget?
So right now, we're separated. So when I came on, we was together to organize and the chamber, I work with Fuchs to make sure that we were completely separate from the city and to make sure that we separated our budgets. So right now, we've got about thirty thousand dollars set aside. But our operating budget right now, I'm looking at about twenty-one percent.
Where would you want your chamber to be if everything was perfect?
Well, I'm a big believer in economic development. I also brought up to Tyler that I want to be able to bring our business community together and actually build a, or have a North Shore Chamber or North Shore Conference Center. If my chamber was where I wanted to be or where I actually envisioned it to be, is that we work with every single municipality, we showcase, we become the information hub. We kind of already are different things. We put Brown Deer's Farmers Market in here, even a Brown Deer one. Do you remember at the time, we still wanted to showcase if that community wanted to remember. We still wanted to have something in our calendar. And we got so many phone calls like, oh, we want to know more about this farmer market. We want to know about this. And all the communities had a cause and we want to be that information hub so that we can kind of weed out things that aren't necessarily tied to the government, but tied to your community myself. We can help, you know, with information, we can help with promoting them. I really just want to see this chamber grow to the point where we can really give back to the community. I grew up in the corner with Glendale, because it's Brown Deer. And so I really, I mean, I'm the first point for that to be honest. I mean, maybe great. So this community really means a lot to me. And I think that's why some of the public officials came over to the warehouse, really wanting you to do this because you actually care about the community and you want to see it grow. So our chair membership is up a hundred fifty-three percent. And our social media is, no offense, but it's better than my Macy's right now. We're at four hundred percent. We have more followers than them. Really just trying to get that followership, get that, you know, leadership role in our community and then be able to put out things like we did the Chamber Expo for the first time last year at Park Street. And we were able to showcase and kind of do a co-op program where all the chamber members got to have a free information booth there and showcase themselves to the community as a whole. So my goal in all this on the chamber side is really to bring more businesses to the North Shore. And Brown Deer obviously is one of those that can benefit from that. Where Bay Side or Fox Point might not see that, River Hill might not see that aspect of it. They might want to see it more on the residence level. And where Glendale and Brown Deer might see it on the tourism level. I really believe that if you have strong business community, you have strong residents that care about your community. People will want to visit there, spend their money there, and revisit and maybe even plant roots there for themselves as well. So my vision is huge all the time, like anymore we come in, I'm flopping off like ideas, wanting to make. But I do understand that has to make sense. And so my vision for this is just to continue to grow, continue to, you know, help businesses stay in business, whether they're small, they're big, make sure that they don't leave our North Shore area to go somewhere else. It's really big, and then also working with M Seven right now. We just got a bike store front that is finally getting sold in Glendale. And so I'm trying to do that for all the communities. It's be that voice that might go to those events, that might speak to the right person. I'll say, hey, I also work with the Village of Brown Deer and I have this bike store front that really could be utilized this way and then working with M Seven so they can actually get those bigger companies to move here. All right, I hope that answers your question.
Oh, yeah.
I know there's a question.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to do. But I started here.
I was just going to make a comment in that, you know, I would agree with what you're doing. It's kind of like the same concept that value started back in nineteen ninety-five. And you always start out small. And the issue was back then is that the different communities didn't know enough about value. And so, you know, you people movement and people in the world, because the more people you have doing or inputment into this, the better it's going to be. And I think that's what value found out too, and that's been going on since nineteen ninety-five.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Yeah, we're really just trying to see your help for sure.
So, Trustee Johnson, you have another question?
Yes, I do. When it comes to your relationship working with the village, who would be your point person that you'd be working with in the regular basis?
So I already met separately and took Kerry out to coffee, who does a lot of marketing. And then I also took Danielle out to coffee, the Parks and Rec. So those will be my chief point person. I mean, Tyler, obviously, I love her enough to join our board one day, but I right now, we have Carl, the city administrator for Glendale on our board. And then we have all different hotels and businesses that are part of the North Shore Chamber. We are true run by our membership. We set up a circuitary year of like, how can we make our events better for our businesses? So like, for example, we're changing our hard mingle time, seven thirty to ten instead of seven thirty to nine so that people can drop their kids off and still be able to come in there. So we're completely run by our membership. I'm really big on that. And then obviously, I'm the executive director. So I make, you know, different tedious things, but I do bring everything back to the chamber. We have the annual meeting, maybe for all where we showcase all of our financials to all the memberships. So all members are invited to come to that, see where we're spending our money, what we're doing in the community. We just sponsored the Make-A-Wish event at Bay Shore, just trying to do more things philanthropically. I studied nonprofits in college in one of mine. So I'm just trying to bring that really and helping our community grow. But yes.
My final question.
Of course.
Sound like it's staff two or is it more than just two?
So it's technically three. We just hired David in August. It was just me and Jesse who worked there, but she's more on the tourism side of it and more of the office manager slash accounting person. Where I was kind of spearheading the chamber and all the marketing for tourism and all the daily things for a while. So our board decided to go around hiring other person. We did extensive searches and found David, who actually just previously worked for like church books in programming. And he's really got an economic development background with studying economics. So we thought that he would be perfect for this role. So there's technically three of us. I'm the executive director, he's on the chamber side, and Jesse's more on like the office manager side of it, processing and doing a lot of the accounting, but also helping with tourism and bringing things. So it is a big task and I need to look at these chambers that have two, three hundred staff members. We're obviously not there, but that is my vision is that one day we have more membership managers or membership staffers that work possibly under David. And then I oversee the whole project in terms of really growing and hitting the ground and getting businesses to join and then putting on large-scale community events. We're actually looking at hosting our next Chamber Expo because partners are using their methods for what Sheridan, if they join the chamber.
If I can add quickly also, we also in twenty twenty-four, we're deploying a volunteer to help with additional tasks. We'll have additional non-staff. You have another question?
No, I just have a final comment. Can I go ahead and do that? I think it's a great idea. I think this was sort of missing piece that we talked to Tyler about in the village. So I'm going to go support it.
Thank you.
Just a couple of questions. One is because of Grandview, Grandville?
Yeah.
Chamber has been around for so long and people get confused, the boundaries between Chamber has been around for so long, and people get confused, uh, the boundaries between Brown Deer and. How do you plan to distinguish, uh, because I can almost guarantee you, you probably have a lot of brown deer businesses that are.
Yeah.
Of the Grandview.
So honestly, I haven't heard too much about Grandview, in the big scope of things, to be honest, I only really know about, because I drive, I just moved to the Falls, so I kind of separate working life. Um, but I just only see like the events they put on and we can follow them, um, but I think our presence of having the North Shore, the seven communities, and really having that. Diversity that we have in our area, really just our logo, we really developed our logo so it's like nobody else's, really developed our color and our branding. So that it would feel like anybody else in this area, um, how we plan on being a French area, not just being the North Shore Chamber, speaking highly of the Chamber. We actually urge people to be part of more of our Chamber, because we never know what you can get out of it. Um, we even have businesses that are still part of that other person's chamber thing, um, and we don't talk ill to our members about that situation. We just say, if you gather, you like out of it, that's great, but this is what we do, and we are the North Shore Chamber of Commerce. Um, so just working that way, if they want to do some co-op events, we'd be really open to it, we've had, um, Monopoly Falls Chamber reach out to us, um. We actually, the LGBTQ Chamber of Wisconsin just joined our chamber as a member, so that we can do more co-op events with them as well. So we're not, we don't look at chambers as, you know, competition, we look at it as we're all kind of better than the business community and the community overall.
The other question I have is, uh, as a relation. To that. Do we have, or do, as a member, do you have access to the bylaws of the chamber?
So you can ask for that, and we can give them to you for sure, we have them in a holder in our office, um, we don't send them out electronically per se. Um, our board obviously mentioned that, and also like any member from Brown Deer could join the board, so long as you want to, if Tyler isn't up to, you can totally join the board too. So I'm, I'm too busy for that, I totally understand, but, um.
No, but one of these people may want.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, that's one of the reasons I want to see what the bylaws say. Uh, but the other thing is, uh, have the other North Shore communities, I know Glendale was already a member.
Yes.
What other, um, municipalities in the North Shore are joining?
So Whiteman Bay, um, joined, but at their bid district, so their business district is a member, um. We're trying to get the villagers to join and see the value in, but a lot of, so when I first started, they told me that Whiteman Bay and Shorewood. You brought it, everyone's their separate stuff, and they're never going to join with you and all the different Glendale area. And I just sat down with the bid directors of Shorewood, Whiteman Bay, and said, why aren't we working together? We're, we're all small, but we're all mighty, we all have great businesses, why aren't we working together? And that's what kind of spearheaded, um, this idea in my head to that be Glendale area business association, to be the North Shore Chamber of Commerce. Um, and so when I brought that up to the board, they approved it, we brought it to the membership meeting, they approved it. Um, and I, I worked really closely with Janet, who's the Shorewood bid director, and Lexi, who is the Whiteman Bay bid director. Um, so Shorewood joined as their, as their bid as well, um, no one necessarily said each other that. Glendale have joined, uh, but we did just present at the managers' meeting last week.
Yeah, and that's where I would update that, I mean, I, I think we're slightly a brown deer as a municipality, a little ahead of the curve of joining. Just because we had that meeting a few months ago, but the presentation went really well. I know I've already talked with some of the managers, and I would anticipate in twenty twenty four, we'll see some of the other municipalities join as well too. So I really do see this as a good collaborative effort. Yeah.
Are you going to have T-shirts about this?
We have, we have stickers right now, we're all, but, um, hopefully, yeah, one day, T-shirts, hoodies, blankets.
One that's different.
Flax, yeah, we have flax.
Oh, you do?
So we're now, we have window clings and we have flax, so depending on, uh, like right now, if you guys join, you get a window claim in your window. And then we're also, this year, twenty twenty four, we're going to be having a more big one for our members, um, so that's going to be something that's new. We also have yearly sponsorships this year, so like, one organization could sponsor all the hardening angles and get that brand exposure. So giving businesses more exposure, or even municipality more exposure, um, positively in our communities. So, but yeah, we're working on the other municipalities, Tyler's helping a little bit, but.
All right.
Other questions, not, could you hear?
No, go ahead.
Good, you got more?
So, I'm not opposing this, I'm just, I have to tell you what I'm thinking.
Yeah, of course.
Uh. Both Darryl and I have, yeah, a lot of years working in economic development at municipal levels, and what we both have done. Is run a business improvement district, that's a grand building, it's a business improvement district, and it's funded by the businesses. Who pay an additional cesset on top of the property tax to fund this. You need staff that's working full time with a marketing strategy to make this work. Ninety five dollars, each chamber's not going to be, to me, enough to do that.
Uh, we're just giving you back that pricing, that's actually just our own pocket, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So I'm just, I'm just, as I'm looking at this, uh, and then we have committees that we've, we've formed. To help do things like marketing, uh, events, special events, that kind of thing. That if you were going to do this, sounds like we are, that, uh, you would need to connect with them as well, so there's no, not overlaps in what's you doing, what they're doing. And everybody's kind of on the same page.
Yeah, of course, and I'd love to compete with them, and discuss how we can, uh, have, you know, competing events in this area, being so close together, for sure.
And I think that's what Carrie comes in, she can be marketing.
Yeah, like, that's, that's what I was going to say.
She's, they rather than that, yeah.
I'm saying, so.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I like to think a little bit more out of the box, I like to think that, you know, if we're going, you're going to do it, structure so that you have enough funds and. That way you retain staff, you can be on a long range plan, and then engage all the different partners in the, in the North Shore here. So this thing about Grandview, they got a lot of money because they got all those industrial companies back there.
Right, and we're not based off of.
Right, so, but they're city Milwaukee, not that you can't collaborate with them, but their premises, they're, they're targeted map area. It's like Brown Deer is our targeted map area, that's all I'm saying, so. I'm just saying, I, I think you need to think a little larger, otherwise you're going to be in a struggling mode for a long time.
I appreciate that, for sure, I will say, um, just to give you a little hope in this, is that like. Uh, this is my, like, this is not, like, my staff, and like, it's not like I'm going to burn out, because I'm actually very passionate about what I do in terms of like. Growing this area and building and connecting with businesses, um, I will say that in the first few years, to be completely transparent, we were funded by the tourism. Because if you have a star business community, it helps tourism dollars, so that's why those big accounts, when I first started here, my predecessor had them all kind of put together. We're finally able to stand on our two feet at the chamber and hire somebody on, and now be able to. Bring in enough money for membership renewals and chambership dues, um, last year, we got fourteen thousand dollars standing for new members, and then renewals about matched to that. Um, so we, we've lost it, new member businesses closing, things like that, um, but also through this, these new sponsorship arms that we're doing, we're able to kind of. Make more money as well at on larger scale events, um, and how are they different than like a bid or a tip or anything like that, or that? We don't get any money from the businesses just automatically for the area, they're supposed to be, uh, they elevate that area, that street, uh, they can't, they're not supposed to, I should say. Um, showcase like one business toll, right, they're supposed to like do stuff that elevates the street or the community on that street or on that, on that. Floor map or map of that area that they cover, uh, but chamber, we can individually showcase our different businesses on our social media. Our marketing strategies that we have through different events, through different partnerships, um, we've seen a lot of our members using other members, and I'll say our paper. To me, not like any other, I've been a part of a lot of chambers in the past, uh, ours is more relationship based, so like, we know all our members by name, we know their families, we know. We invite everyone to community events, we try to be as relational as we can, um. I mean, for my wedding, I used to only chamber members, and it was a headache, I could probably use like one company and done it all, but I really like to do. What I preach and be about the mission, and so really trying to get other people to do that, and we've kind of seen it over the last year, um, just about broke. I mean, when David came, I think it happened in thirty five members, and we're already up to one hundred seventy three, and these few months just by adding another team member hour. Um, just because it was me going from businesses to businesses, and now we're actually being able to make those connections, and I think. Having the village around the year will help benefit all parties, it'll benefit us for, okay, businesses see that they're the trusted chamber in the area. Because a lot of people do have a subtle case in their mouth about chambers after this, um, gentleman. We run into it all the time, where we go into a chamber, and they say, we don't want to be here with that person, and we're like, no, we were created because of that person. So there is a lot of things to overcome with this, um, I realized that right away, my job, like, first few weeks of working, it was like. Okay, we need to make sure we do this legally, we got to make sure we do this the right way, we got to make sure that we have a, a plan in place. So I do work with the president of my board, um, and my board team members a lot to kind of help us spearhead this. Um, but I think the success rate that we're going at right now, with the growth from sixty three members to a hundred and thirty something members within a year, um. Is just telling like how hard we're willing to work and how much we want this to continue to grow. But I do appreciate any feedback or any questions, because I'm a really big believer in getting that feedback and pushing through it.
Especially if you both have worked in economic development, I personally, as an economist, would love to talk more about how we can continue to do our job better. Listen, Jackson.
Yeah, I have a question related to diversity, especially how you promote businesses of color.
Yeah.
Yeah, share with me your passion or your ideals, or how you do that to get mentioned in the chamber once, once you get in, how you promote your, promote your business.
Yeah, so for, uh, Black History Month, uh, we did spotlights on like our black business owners and promoted and marketed their businesses on our farm. Um, we'll actually go and buy gift cards for minority owned businesses, um, what we do like raffles, or we donate raffle baskets to other organizations fundraisers. Um, we really want to uplift everybody and also bring value to people that, uh, minorities, that we give them grant opportunities through WIVIP. Um, we work with WIVIP directly, we also can run out on grants for the balance backs, we did that for a few businesses. Uh, we work with the collective at Bay Shore, um, Hannah Dieter, who ran this in our nutrition, it's exposed, she's doing online now, she's still part of the chamber, just because she sees. The opportunities that we are able to do, um, I should have stated, so my mom happened on my study, first relations in college. It's something that's been really something I went to P S and then went, and then got shipped off to Naval Bay growing up, so that was like a very big wake up call to me of like. Who I am, and where I'm going, and so I had best friends that lived across the street from me in North Harbor, and they weren't able to get into Naval Bay, but for some reason I was able to live across the street from each other all the time. It just didn't make sense to me, um, and so I've always kind of had that in my back pocket of wanting to help anyone and everyone, and also uplift the voices that. Might not be able to meet her, but giving them a platform to speak as well, um, so. We don't necessarily do like different programming just for minority owned businesses right now, we're still kind of at our. Baby formation, I would say, of where I want to get to, but definitely during Black History Month, we're trying to promote things. We're definitely walking in the Juneteenth parade with, um, older women, Tanika and Brian Kennedy, they tried to attract them to, you know, walk in, um. The Pride Parade this year as the North Shore Chamber, so we're trying to give back in every facet that we can, um, but also partnering, you know, with the Black Chamber of Commerce for Wisconsin as well. Um, trying to tap into that and see how we can help as well, but we have earned a few grants, um, and we've definitely just been trying to uplift those businesses, and that's why we. No matter the color, why we keep our dues so low, so when you're saying ninety five dollars for nonprofit, it's because we want the smaller businesses to be able to go into the chamber. Why are one to three full time, if you look at other chambers of commerce, like Monopoly Falls and Sussex, there is ten times, two times, three times the amount, um, and they see their smallest. White item on their, um, pricing is more than our highest, and we do that strategically, because we know we're in a diverse area of the North Shore. We've got the, you know, highest income level and the lowest. Um, so being from this area and seeing all the diversity, growing up with it, and wanting to help promote this area. So that other people can see that, and I, I definitely want to hear everybody see in the workplace for sure as well, so to be able to give face to it, um, but I wasn't involved in, um, we, I don't know, David, but. Uh, I obviously can't have bias either way, um, but definitely just trying to give others opportunities, so for our lunch and learns, a chamber member can speak at those. Um, actually, there's my brother Johnson, who last week, and talked to him about a few things, of him coming to speak to the North Shore, because we're still in Milwaukee County. And it's still part of his district, and it's still trying to show that like, we have the first black mayor, and like, we should be so happy and proud, we should rally around that, about that. You know, everybody wants to have politics, everything, where a chamber like doesn't, we just want to give the voices to those that want to be heard and should be heard. And so like, for those lunch and learns, we open it to our chamber members, that any chamber member can come to us and say, hey, I want to do a lunch and learn topic, and we give them the shit to pour. We, we set up the events, they don't pay for it, they're just speaker there to give them a voice.
So, did he agree to do that?
Um, yeah, he told me, he took my business, like, we, we changed business card, and he told me I can call Shabby, I think that's his nickname, so I got a little excited about that, um. Maybe he's turned it over, I don't know, but I felt really cool about that, um. But we do have like, so our next speakers for our lunch and learn is actually Eddie Williams Smith, who works in Milwaukee, and trying, so she'll be our next speaker, as well as Damian, who's opening up. The center offering bad news, um, to talk to our businesses about why so far the opportunity center comes to the north side of Milwaukee. Um, it's tougher to realize our, ourselves, so it's half Milwaukee, half Glendale where they're building it, um, so it will be considered the North Shore, but it's also for the north side of Milwaukee. And I don't think that deserves those opportunities.
Yeah, I think you might want to reach out to the county executive, because that's in Milwaukee County, the city is the mayor's perfume, he really has no governance over it. Or, you know, sure.
Yeah, but just to like conquer businesses.
Yeah, you want to, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I get that, I'm just saying, uh, that's why, you know, with all the things he's got.
Well, the other piece is the business might be Glendale or Brown Deer and North, um, Fox Point, they say, but the person, people might live, employees and everybody else might live in Milwaukee. So, I mean, we cross lines in terms of being in Milwaukee County. And, and there may be members that are interested to hear what's going on in this city, as it may impact their businesses.
I will tell you guys, like, probably about eight percent of our membership are being located in the North Shore, there are businesses that are either in Milwaukee, in Brookfield, you can have one from Chicago. Because they want to do business in the North Shore, they want to promote themselves to the North Shore, like businesses, um, like Heritage Outdoor Media, they're in Chicago, they joined the chamber. And now they're in Two Billboards Club in Glendale, right, so like, they might want to bring business to this area, and so we say that the chamber is for the North Shore and beyond. Because we want it to obviously overall impact the North Shore as much as we can, but we also open our doors to any opportunity that can come our way. But they do have a payment trip fee, because that is kind of.
Extra fifty dollars?
Yes.
And, um, just in case you all didn't see, elected officials can join too.
Oh, I saw, I saw.
We.
Would you like that ready to be hired?
Would I? Regular mouse.
That part to me, I can definitely be like, no, we're okay. So, because we're maybe, you know, we have talked to our board, our board, certain board members have brought up about raising our prices to reflect other communities that might be in the area, but they might have. They have a way more of that stuff, I mean, I mean, it's been around for a hundred years, over a hundred years, right, so we're.
You can't.
No, and if we don't want to raise our margins where the smaller businesses can't join, and even when we have smaller businesses that maybe can't even afford that full time level. Uh, for example, one of our initiatives that happens to be minority owned, we do a payment plan on her, so she should pay monthly, um, because. We want to see their business succeed, we want to see her stay in business, and we don't want to be that, you know, pain that comes around once a year and wants all that money up front. We also use our chamber members for everything that we do, even with the one that we work on, so any vendor at Hager Bash, where we have six thousand, seven thousand people coming to that event. We offer free tent to any chamber member, so that they can get that exposure to all of the people. So like, we give exclusivity, like, exposure, first come, first served to every chamber member, whether it's on the tourism side or it's on the side. And then any event we put on, like, we're having a huge cheers in the new years, where it's like, kind of like a celebration of our chambers for the year. We raffle off riders for all the chamber members, we use all the care from other chamber members, um, so really just trying to, in lieu of that, everything that we do.
Thank you, and David, right, thank you both, uh, for this information, we have the brochures, we've got heard a lot, um. So what we're considering tonight is whether or not, uh, Brown Deer should join the North Shore Chamber of Commerce. At the reasonable rate of ninety five dollars a year. So, um, is there someone that might make that motion, trustee Yonkers?
I'm going to have to build a project, going to North Shore Chamber of Commerce.
Is there a second?
Sir?
It's been moved by trustee. It's been moved by trustee Holmes and seconded by trustee Grease. Or the village of Brownie to join the North Shore Chamber of Commerce. All those in favor? Uh, any opposed? Honestly, I have a motion here. Thank you.
Thank you guys so much for your time tonight.
And we should do a nice article saying. Even if this is in the news level.
And we can do pressure with this too. There's a lot of media contacts. I was like Tyler about that. So. Well, you all have a wonderful night.
You too.
Just gonna be careful around.
Is it still in there?
Now we got it. Yeah.
All right.
Not this year, just because he's anyone, so we gotta make it in the middle. I just completely wrong, I'm sorry. But maybe if you'd like to look at it.
So the next item on our. Jim is the, uh. Consider approval of the twenty twenty-four holiday schedule. And that is in your packet. And Tyler, I think the only. Addition is the only addition to Juneteenth.
Yeah, I mean typically this is something that we always add to the consent agenda. Uh, but, uh, really C and D are related, uh, with the, the, the proposal of adding. Uh, Juneteenth as an official holiday recognized by the Village and Brownie organization. In our facilities, we want to put under new business just so we had some discussion. Um. So, and I will say this was also discussed at the finance and personnel committee as they reviewed the employee handbook revisions. Um, and approved support. So, uh, you know, here, I could answer any questions. I can tell you. Uh, a few of our employees right now are taking vacation days off on Juneteenth in order to celebrate and recognize the holidays. So. And as we're seeing more and more municipalities start taking, or having Juneteenth as an official holiday, I just thought this would be a time. Uh, a proactive measure to have that discussion at the village board level.
Okay, um. Any comments or questions? And how many? People are working now, um, in a different environment. Does your organization take off Juneteenth?
Yes, we have that and we just include it in the Gitchin mistake as a member of the holiday.
And I hope.
Yes.
And what about you?
No.
Yeah.
They added Milwaukee Day. Last. Year, year before.
Yeah. And that's been a legal holiday for forever in life. But, uh, any questions? You said this is at the, uh, personnel. Would we approve? There are no questions? Is there a motion?
There's a motion. I'm going to approve the twenty twenty-four holiday schedule.
Is there a second?
A second.
Then moved by trustee Thompson and seconded by trustee Booker to approve the, uh, twenty twenty-four holiday. Yes, all those in favor? Uh, any opposed? I understand the motion here. Thank you. Uh, there was nothing else to say, uh. This, what I would say to all of us is make sure we have these. On our calendars, especially like the Fourth of July, because some of these impact, may impact our fourth meeting.
Correct. And too, Karen will be working on the meeting schedule for twenty twenty-four, which is typically on a calendar. So. That's something that we can have, you know, both of those documents collectively together for use at board. Yeah.
All right. Uh, next item, I indeed consider approval of employee handbook revisions. And that is in our packet. A lot of redlining with updates. And this is also looking for the. Uh, personnel, that's now committed.
Yes. Yep. And as promised, we're going to continue doing this annually because things come up. Uh, not as many changes as last year and, you know, that will probably be a trend as we go year by year, but. You know, just to highlight some of the things, um, you know, we started receiving some. Requests for some vacations over ten consecutive working days. And while that's not always an issue, it's just something that. We want to make sure we have the proper coverage and support. So that's the only reason why we added that. Uh, change. Um, we had some changes with our health insurance and fringe benefits. So. Uh, like the high deductible, the health savings account, short-term one for disability. So we included that language in there. Every few years I take a look at some other benefits too, such as like the uniform reimbursement to make sure it's comparable to what we're seeing in other municipalities. So. You know, every five or so years, that's something that's typically bumped up just based on cost of living. And, um. We've seen a lot of inflationary costs recently. So, um, otherwise, um, you know, we, we had some situations where if an employee leaves within the first year, we had. You know, really reevaluated as far as, you know, what should be done as far as their vacation payout. And that's, there was a change related to that. Otherwise, you know, one thing, uh, we also had a clarification on is we had a, a year where we had some holidays that were on the weekend, especially in the winter. So if like, let's say Christmas is on the weekend, but the village is acknowledging Christmas on a Monday. What do you do? Um, so we had that clarification as far as how that overtime pay would work out. So. Um, so you know, those are the, the, basically my three, four minute summary of the changes that. We've made in the handbook and yep, the finance and personnel committee reviewed this and is recommending approval.
Okay. Any questions?
I have one question related to. You talk about almost modified this every year. So that means each year, each employee gets a copy of the handbook, an opportunity to do it.
So actually before it comes to you as a board, a lot of like our administrative. Uh, employees who have a computer will email them the copy of the redline changes that so they can see and ask questions before it comes to the board. For like public works, we actually will print a draft so and put in the lunchroom so they can review it. And, uh, that's where myself and Gosha make ourselves available for any. Questions for employees that they have questions on the change, that if there's a, you know, a significant or reoccurring question that comes up that we can review that. Potential modification or question before it comes to the board level.
Do you remember if there was any comments or any suggestions that would be made by? Players related to the handbook?
Um. The, the one big one works. Um, it was related to just how we, uh. Do overtime in general is, is, is some municipalities. Um, will look at, you know, if you work eight plus hours per day versus forty plus hours per week. And, and, and really defining overtime in that sense. Um, and there's different. That's where I mentioned to them that we need more time to evaluate that. So I didn't propose any changes to overtime. Uh, in that regards, we'll take a closer look at it in twenty twenty-four. Uh, we had some questions on the appendices and that's where I included the question on the, or the comments on the appendices like, um. You know, like our lactation policy or, um, we had some, some things related to the health department with the health department moving. There are some questions as far as. Well, if the health department no longer is in village hall where, you know. Where is that location going to be? Um, so those kind of questions we received during the review process. Yeah.
Other question? Well, this has been, uh. Recommended by the personnel, finance personnel committee. How we had questions asked and if there are no other questions, we do need approval. Of the employee handbook revisions. Any motion?
I'll move the, we approve the twenty twenty-four employee handbook revisions.
Is there a second?
A second.
The move by trustee Woods and seconded by trustee Booker to approve the employee handbook revisions. All those in favor? Uh, any opposed? Standard motion here. Thank you. Uh, item number E on our agenda is consider appointment and swearing in of the finance director as the deputy clerk.
Yeah. So I, I, so just to let the board know, so, uh, if you remember, we, we used to have the deputy clerk with the admin assistant. Um, after two individuals in that position, you know, they were hired on and, and really had a focus on elections where we needed. That individual to be really focused on the admin assistant. So we, we, in the recent recruitment for Jen, who's our new admin assistant, um, uh, removed the deputy clerk. So during the recruitment, we could emphasize on the admin support functions and that was very successful. We got a. A, a higher tick in, uh, applications at a really good, uh, pool of candidates. Um, and, and Jen is a, a Brownie residence. So we're happy to have her here. Uh, but it then, uh, alerted the question of what to do with the deputy clerk role. Cause that is in the, the village code as a position. So in this interim period, it, it very well may be that Jen at the admin assistant may have some interest in the deputy clerk. But in the meantime, we have to have someone who is sworn in as the deputy clerk and talking with Karen and Derek. Uh, we would recommend Derek to serve in that capacity. I do want to also note though that, and I've told Karen this a few times, that. Um, I'll be making myself available on election night. So she has additional coverage. Um, as, as we, we really use, uh, twenty twenty-four to assess what the deputy, you know, where the deputy clerk role will fit in moving forward. So tonight we just need board action to, to approve the appointment. And then after that, we'll, we can swear in Derek.
Any comments on Mr. David? Is, is there additional compensation?
No.
They don't bring that.
You just go ready.
Other duties as a symbol.
Okay, now, uh. Andrew, you talked about, uh. Maybe for a year, fifteen, twelve months or. Interim, you say interim period?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think, I don't think I'm speaking out of turn when I say this, because we've talked about this. I mean, we've already seen Jen handle the position really well. We want to get through the April election. Um, it hurt just concentrating on the admin support function and if, you know, she continues to. Perform well and have interest. I mean, that's really where the fit is. It was just part of the recruitment effort. So we just need. Derek and even myself to help, you know, with, with this interim period. Um, so that's why I'd say the six months, because after the six months in April, uh, we may come back and have. You know, Jen is sworn in, but we just want to take it step by step and, and really just allow her to be comfortable in the admins or well first.
All right. Questions, comments?
Are there any additional, is there an additional training needed to be, uh, this? Uh, deputy clerk?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, in an interim basis, the answer is, is no, because he, I mean, he'll lean heavily on, and same with me, we'll lean on Karen, but. In an organization, you're deputy clerk, whoever it is more on a permanent basis, there is a, a clerk certification class up in Green Bay. Over three years, um, each year they'll go for a week and take classes. Um, and that is a really good training. Uh, there's also some virtual training that the Wisconsin Election Commission has. Which I've done that, um, um, when I was actually in Shore, when I did that, that's just a really good general summary that allows someone to be. Uh, uh, you know, have some of that general knowledge in that too. So that's some type of training that, you know, I should probably refresh myself on and. You know, depending on how involved we have Derek, you know, maybe taking some of those as well.
Trustee Johnson.
So on his resume, would he address himself as a deputy clerk or interim deputy clerk?
He'll be deputy clerk. With an asterisk. Yeah, I, I, in slightly, probably not communities our size, but just slightly smaller. I mean, it, it, one of the common things is to have your treasurer as deputy clerk. And then your clerk is deputy treasurer, because those two positions work so, you know, back and forth together. Organizations our size, I would say it's very common to have the, you know, or some communities will have the clerk and treasurer together as well. And the community our size typically between the deputy and the clerk treasurer, I mean. Three is a, is a pretty common number. Some might have four, but three is a pretty common number. So right now we're just going to get by with two, but.
And I had to call when Susan was here, she was also against.
Yeah. Yeah. So on a, on a temporary basis to get by, you know, a model like this would, would certainly work, but we'll, we'll have a more permanent proposal for you and that's six to twelve period.
Trustee Holmes.
And listen, man, come with, with what the audit said about separation of duties or.
That would not, no. Yeah. Good question. That would not.
Other question? Well, as long as, uh, all parties are in agreement. We have a motion. Oh, Karen, are you in agreement?
I am.
I'm going to point there is banner as deputy.
Banner? Banner?
Banner.
Is there a second?
I'd like to know.
It's been moved by trustee Thompson and seconded by trustee Grease. Susan appointed Derek Banner as deputy clerk. You're in the village of Brownie. Are all those in favor? Uh, any opposed? I stand the motion here. It's not against warning.
The chief said you can. The chief said you can commandeer a vehicle now.
All right, there's your right hand and key under me. I say your name.
I, Derek Banner.
Having been appointed to the office of deputy clerk.
And then appointed to the office of deputy clerk.
But have I yet entered upon the duties there?
Have not yet entered upon the duties there.
Wherever I am, I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Wherever I am, I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will thankfully discharge and move the set office to the best of my ability.
They've win this chart and move the set office to the best of my ability.
So, yeah. All right, congratulations.
So, uh, which that is seven. Oh, six, six. Fair play. I'm the German, uh. It's for me.
Okay.